Welcome, everybody, to the City of Durango City Council Regular Meeting of October 5, 2021. It is 5:31. And may we have a roll call, please?
Councilor Bosmans?
Present.
Councilor Buell?
Here.
Councilor Youssef?
Here.
Mayor Protem Nosworthy?
Present.
And Mayor Baxter?
Present. May we have the introduction of the translator, please? Hello, we can't hear you. There you go.
We have Sam Guzman translating for us tonight.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Now, we're on to the identification of actual conflicts of interest. Councils, are there any conflicts of interest? Wonderful. Okay, so now we're going to have public participation. This section of the agenda is set aside for the public to write comments or ask questions regarding items that are not scheduled for a hearing or public testimony, or that do not otherwise appear on this agenda. City Council will not respond to questions from the dais. Citizens should address their comments directly to City Council. As this is a virtual meeting, the avenues for public participation have been adjusted. So if you are online to sign in, the moderator will let you know how to do that. And also, as this is a virtual meeting, the avenues for public participation have been adjusted. All written comments received by the city clerk by noon today have been delivered to council and will be summarized in the meeting minutes. And we have no one signed up for public participation. Is there anyone in the audience who didn't get the chance to sign up? No. Shannon, is there anyone virtually?
I do not see anyone with a raised hand virtually.
All right. Thank you very much. Then we will move on to proclamations and presentations, which is a presentation by Southwest Conservation Corps regarding trail and open space cleanup projects. Welcome, ladies.
Just sharing the screen. Great. All right, well, good evening, all. My name is Clara Moulton, and I'm the Four Corners Director with Southwest Conservation Corps. And then...
Hi, everyone. I'm Teresa Dettore. I'm the Youth Programs Manager with SEC. And we're really excited to talk to you about the work that our youth crews, our high school crews, did this summer with the City of Durango.
If you two are comfortable, when you speak, taking your mask off, you can do that because it'll be easier for the people in the public to understand you.
For sure. Great.
All right, so we're just going to kick it off with a brief history for those that have not heard of Southwest Conservation Corps. Oh, sorry, I'm supposed to change slides. One moment. There we go. So we were founded in 1998, specifically as a youth corps. In those last 20 years, we've kind of moved away from that. But in the last five years or so, we've gone back to that youth service, particularly high schoolers aged 14 to 18 is that demographic that Teresa primarily works with. So our mission, if you haven't heard of it, is to empower young adults and veterans to positively impact their lives, their communities, and the environment. I'm going to kick it over to Teresa to kind of share out. I'm going to be her technological support tonight.
So the youth program with the Southwest Conservation Corps has a few goals, the first being providing viable job opportunities to our local youth. So we employ local high school students ages 14 to 18 to work on our public lands, which is pretty sweet. So the youth get to go outside. We partner with municipalities, such as the City of Durango, public land management agencies, municipalities, and other organizations. So the youth crews go out and do work on our public lands. So that could be anything from trail construction and maintenance to trash pickup. It could be habitat restoration, fencing projects. They do a whole sort of work to really better our communities while gaining a lot of valuable skills to work in public land management agencies, or skills like leadership, teamwork, communication, things that are super transferable for them in their lives. So really just empowering them as individuals through our program. So this year, we were really lucky to work with the City of Durango. Through the Durango Area Trails Alliance, we put in a grant with Great Outdoors Colorado and the Colorado Youth Corps Association in collaboration with the City of Durango, La Plata County, and the Bureau of Land Management. And we sent our youth crews out for over four weeks, working on the local trails in the area. So they worked at Overend Mountain Park, they worked at Dolla Mountain Park, they worked at the La Plata County Maintained Landfill over near Overend, and then as well with the BLM's Animus City Mountain and Perrin State Wildlife Area. So they were working in their backyard. They were all local to this area. They are youth from La Plata County, working in La Plata County, which was a really cool experience for them. So the main goals of this project work was to address the erosion and degradation of trails caused by record-breaking trail user days through COVID-19. So really addressing those COVID impacts that we've had on our natural landscapes and the places that we explore. So in addition to just some trail maintenance and just the routine things like fixing erosion, such as you see here, which is a pretty drastic sloped-out trail that they fixed to the photo on the right, which is pretty awesome, to make them more sustainable and rideable trails or hikeable trails. And then just a bunch of routine trail maintenance, and then closing a lot of social trails that were created throughout this record-breaking trail user days. So over the course of these four weeks, a few different crews worked out with the city. We served 23 local youth from La Plata County specifically on this project alone. So 23 local youth that were getting paid a viable wage while working. Hands-on manual labor, they carried, in this specific photo, they carried these posts and some gates all the way up the mountain from Hidden Valley Trailhead basically to the top before it hits Perrin's Peak. So quite the manual labor, which was pretty exciting for them, but they really did an awesome job on all the work that they did, and they just, they worked super hard. They were led by two crew leaders. All of our crews have about six to eight members of high school students. And so throughout the project weeks, they work, they camp, they cook together, and then they receive a lot of education from our wonderful project partners like Amy. So they maintained about four miles of trails, they restored about two acres. That was actually seeding at the La Plata County landfill. They removed 48 bags of trash from different properties, as well as the river trail, so helping clean our communities and making the places that we get to enjoy more enjoyable. And then total, they put in over 1,300 hours of project work together, which I think is a pretty compelling number. And then, you know, this program is really cool because it has impact on members' lives, but it also has impact on our community, and it has impact on the people that get to use these trails that they're supporting, that they're working on, and they're really spending their summers, putting their effort in and really working to gain a lot of skills and lessons. So lessons like how to build a trail, but also how to persevere, how to walk away feeling really good about the work that they did throughout the day, which I think is a really awesome, awesome feeling. And I just want to shout out to Amy, who is our project partner. The crews absolutely loved working with the city. They just raved about the partners, who they got to work with, who they got to learn from, and everything that they just took away from the season that they had with us. So it was really special to hear them give you such high praise. It was really, really a special time. Yeah, lots of, lots of impact. It's really cool to watch these youth who've never camped before, they've never had a job before because they're 14, come in and really thrive. They communicate, they make new relationships, they really put themselves in challenging situations and learn how to work through those, and come away learning from those and taking that into their lives, whether they stay in the conservation field or not. I think this program really sticks with them, which is cool. Just to give a snapshot, so the students in La Plata County were about 50% of the students that we served throughout the summer. So we also work heavily in Montezuma County. So in total, our crews put out over 8,000 hours of project work. We served about 56 high school students. Again, they're getting viable job opportunities, which is pretty cool to see almost $100,000 going to our local youth in wages, which is then staying in our communities and helping the economy. And these are just some other numbers in the stats that our crews accomplished this year. And then again, the partners are kind of how we run our program. It's working with the City of Durango, it's working with different organizations who support us, who have us work with them. Again, this was funded through GOCO and the Colorado Youth Corps Association, which allowed us to put all this work and effort into the trails and our backyard. And then just to give you a quick snapshot of the future of SEC Youth Programs and kind of the need for it in our communities, we had over 150 youth applicants for, like I said, about 50 positions this summer. So we're definitely hoping to expand. We see a need for it in the community. We hear a lot of 14- and 15-year-olds say that this is their only job opportunity, because a lot of places usually work with 16 and older. So this is a really great opportunity to serve some younger youth. We're working with the Youth Advisory Council, so starting to think about some year-round programming. We're thinking, we're engaging some youth who've been alumni of the program to really have a voice at the table in the decision-making process for what the future of SEC Youth Programs looks like. So we have some ideas, but we're excited to get their input as well. We have some middle school programming coming down the line. We're going to pilot next year, and a lot of other things that we're really excited about with the future of SEC Youth Programs. And then finally, we just want to say a big thank you again to the City of Durango, to our partners who work with us for putting in the grant so that we could work with you all. Having local municipality support has been so huge for our program. Often, we work with federal land management agencies, some bigger government organizations. But having the youth work in their own backyards, trails that they ride with Devo, or the ones in their backyards that they explore with their families, and then being able to take their friends out and say, hey, we helped build this trail, or, hey, don't throw your trash because I'm the one who picked it up. You know, I think that has a really lasting impact in the community for generations. So it's pretty cool to see that, and working with the City of Durango, it just kind of was a, it was really awesome, again, to see how much they appreciated working in their own backyard. So it was inclusive, holistic, and impactful for the youth and for us. So thank you for that opportunity. We really hope we can work with you all in the future. So hopefully you can see our, keep an eye out for our youth in the future out on the trails in the summer. They'll be wearing bright yellow hard hats. And then this is our contact information if anyone has any questions.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate it. Do you have any questions, council?
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We had a member of the public come in late. Did you want to do public comment? Okay.
I just wanted to encourage you, you know, we do have a community development program, not that we have any involvement on who's selected, but we do make grants available to organizations in the community. So be on the lookout for that.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
That's through United Way?
It's through United Way. They put the ad out for that. And I don't know if the deadline has passed. All right, good.
Thank you, Ellen. If you want to state your name, and if you're a city resident, you have three minutes.
Sure. Ellen Stein. I am a city resident. I live at 3314 East Fourth Avenue. I have a couple corrections to request and one to make from the September 20 minutes. I spoke and was listed as a county resident. I'm a city resident and was asking you to please make that correction, as well as my mom is Sally, S-A-L-Y-E, just one L. I'm here tonight to make another correction about a statement that I made in the heat of the moment on September 20 about our community development director's credentials. And I was wrong. Kevin Hall is an AICP certified planner. I apologized to him in person last week, and I'm just here to correct that statement. I also remain concerned, as an over-30-year resident of Colorado, about the future of our community and the various ski towns, mountain towns that I've resided in since 1983, when I first moved to Colorado. Durango is and has been at a turning point. For a number of years, COVID has accelerated the growth that we're experiencing, and I remain very concerned about what feels like a lack of attention to long-term community planning. I also want to apologize to Scott Shine, who I have the utmost respect for, Nicole Killian, who I've also worked with, and any implications that my comments about Kevin may have reflected poorly on the Community Development Department, because I know they work really hard. So with that, I still have concerns about some comments that were made, and I understand have been made, one to me directly, and then others secondhand about the 9R Admin Building sale, and what seems like it's a done-deal attitude, and particularly in the wake of Mayor Baxter's comments after our September 20 meeting to go talk to the fire department. You're our elected representatives. We are here asking for a public meeting for people to express their deep, deep concern about the siting of this facility. And the fire station, as you heard from Joe, who owns the cyclyry, is a critical siting decision. And there are many people that you have not heard from, nine mayors who signed whatever letter you just received aside, which I'd love to know how we can get a copy of that that you have not heard from. And comments that are made about, you know, a building here or there and its use. It's still going to be a great community to live in. It's not. We are, you are working against all these plans that the public have put in place with our comp plan, with our multimodal plan, with our Midtown URA plan that go against the goals of the city. Those are aspirational plans, and I am just requesting you to please consider holding a meeting that is before this gets too far down the road and the site plan review process when it's too late. And we're not going to, you're not going to have heard from as many people of the public that are concerned about this acquisition. And I'm just respectfully asking you to...
Oh, and your time is up. I'm sorry.
Reconsider.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so now we're on to the review of the consent agenda. Before we read it, would it be appropriate to poll council on the changes that Ellen mentioned, because they are factual changes? Would that be okay if we, if the consent agenda with the minutes were changing the name, the fact that she's a city resident, not a county resident, and spelling her mother's name correctly? Would that, is that all right with council if we just add those into that and leave it on the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Okay. So if the consent agenda is intended to allow the City Council by a single motion to approve matters that are considered routine or non-controversial, there will be no separate discussions of these items unless a council member requests an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Items removed from the consent agenda will be considered under Agenda Item 9. May we have a reading of the consent agenda, please?
7.1 through 7.3 are approval of minutes. 7.1 is approval of minutes from the September 7, 2021 City Council Study Session. 7.2 are minutes from the September 7, 2021 City Council Regular Meeting. 7.3 are the minutes of the September 20, 2021 City Council Regular Meeting. Item 7.4 is discussion and possible action concerning a resolution authorizing additional full-time transit operators in the Transportation Services Fund. 7.5 is discussion and possible action concerning a resolution updating the City of Durango greenhouse gas emissions reduction goals and joining the International Council for Local Environmental Initiatives, ICLEI, 150, and Cities Race to Zero Campaign. 7.6 is discussion and possible action concerning a letter of support for the Division of Housing's Operation Turnkey Funding for the Best Western Durango Inn and Suites. 7.7 is discussion and possible action concerning the Villas at Hillcrest Phase 7 Final as Built Platt. 7.8 through 7.11 are requests for public hearings, all to be held on October 19, 2021. 7.8 is a request for a public hearing to consider the Mercury Rising Mixed Use Conceptual Plan Development at Mercury Village Lot 4 RA, parcel number 566905100042, and Mercury Village Lot 4 RB, parcel number 566905100043. 7.9 is a request for a public hearing to consider amendments to the Land Use and Development Code, Chapter 2, Zones, Uses, and Development Yield, Chapter 4, Site Design and Natural Resources, and Chapter 7, Word Usage, Measurements, Calculations, and Definitions. 7.10 is a request for a public hearing to consider the Reynolds and Ash Associates 564 East Second Avenue Condominium Minor Subdivision Preliminary Plan. And 7.11 is a request for a public hearing to consider the Buckley Park Preliminary Minor Subdivision.
Wonderful. Thank you. Are there any consent agenda items that councilors would like to remove?
I'd like to remove 7.5 and 7.6.
Anyone else? All right, so do we have a motion for approval of the consent agenda items without 7.5 and 7.6?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? May we have a vote, please?
Councilor Buell?
Yes.
Councilor Youssef?
Yes.
Councilor Bosmans?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nosworthy?
Yes.
And Mayor Baxter?
Yes, thank you. All right, so consent agenda item 7.5 is discussion and possible action concerning a resolution updating the City of Durango greenhouse gas emissions reduction goals and joining the International Council for Local Environmental Initiatives, ICLEI, 150, and Cities Race to Zero Campaign. And Councilor Bosmans, you had a, you want to remove that?
Yeah, so I am just wondering about something there. First of all, greenhouse gas emission reduction is a global effort, and it makes sense to line up with the state goals, so I fully support that. Part of my work is environmental consulting, so I place high importance on this topic, but I also believe it needs to be looked at realistically. So goals should take into account population growth, fact of some reductions are not easily measured by commuters versus car users and that sort of things, specific to our community. Now, regarding joining the ICLEI, they require pretty strong commitments and work that costs money, time, effort, just to be part of it. You have to make plans, actions, publishing requirements. They specify details for staff work, even specific amounts of time that are needed each month, making video statements, et cetera. In addition, they have pretty high goals, a target to get to zero greenhouse gas emissions by 2050 at the latest. So even though it sounds nice to join something like this, I'm also practical in that it requires a lot more time and expenses than might be visible, just to be participating in it. And to me, I would prefer to see that time and effort spent on actually improving our performance instead of doing the meetings and paperwork. So my preference would be, I'm not sure if there's council support for that, but to get a better understanding how much time and effort we would be committing to just by joining this network, and to have a little bit better understanding.
And I will have to say, I was also going to remove this for essentially the same reason. I'm concerned because the staff report mentions that the fiscal impact had, there's no fiscal impact associated with it, and there actually is. I don't know what it costs to join, but the plan would be to go from 80% commitment that we currently have to 100% commitment. So there has to be some cost involved in that difference, and I don't know what it is, so I'm uncomfortable with that. Additionally, our target of community-wide emissions is being reduced, so we are at 30% commitment. It's being asked for a 54% commitment. And again, there has to be some sort of cost involved there, whether it's staff time or whatever it is. So I'm very concerned about that because council in the past has agreed to the 80 and 30%. Additionally, I agree with you, Councilor Bosmans, that there's a plan that needs to be developed within 12 months of joining. And also, we have to be able to manage and track our achievement of that goal. And I really think that there will be time and effort involved in this. And so I think that I would really agree, I would like to see a realistic assessment of what this is going to cost us in order to make these changes. And I'm also a little bit concerned because I agree, I know that we made a community-wide commitment also, but we're also, as you said, Councilor Bosmans, we're at the will of other people who come here and visit too, and it's not just us. So that would be my request, is that we table this until we can get viable financial and fiscal information. Any other thoughts from other councilors?
No, I'd just love to hear from staff.
I think as far as the commitments of joining the ICLEI 150 and the Race to Zero, I had looked at the requirements and thought that they were manageable within existing staff time, but appreciate that maybe a breakdown of the hours commitment could be helpful. I think as far as the updating the commitment to 54% and net zero, this is something that's happening in other communities, reflecting kind of a recognition of setting goals for what needs to happen rather than what we know we can already do. And so I think that's just the thought behind the campaign and behind other communities that are adopting these sorts of goals. I will also say that working with LPEA on the Electric Vehicle Readiness Plan, we did some modeling around their emissions grid factor, and they're expecting, based on the current goal and market analysis, to reach net zero by 2042, which would put us over the 30% goal for the community as a whole already. And so I think there's a pathway through what's already happening at the city and with partners to achieve those goals.
That'd be great. I would still suggest that we find out what it would actually take us to do, and also the comments that you just made about where we could be anyway, because that's not in here, and we don't know that. So I would really appreciate that. I don't know, would council be okay with more information?
I have a question just for Imogen as well. What feedback are you getting through your community engagement around the sustainability plan?
We had, so a series of six public workshops on the draft, high-level strategies and actions. And also, there's currently an interactive platform live where community members can provide feedback on those actions as well. We're getting some good feedback. It's mixed, and some of it's quite specific to the actions, but that could definitely be shared in more detail as well.
And is there a deadline for involvement in this ICLEI? And also, how, what would the budget implications be as far as if we reached a decision now or if we reached a decision in a month?
So there's no budget implications of joining the campaign, other than the staff time commitment. We're already a member of ICLE. We pay annual dues to be a member of that, and they have the software that we do the greenhouse gas emissions accounting through. And so that's how they were able to provide the technical assistance with coming up with an interim 2030 goal that's specific to the emissions breakdown for the Durango community. So there's no deadline that I'm aware of, and certainly no immediate financial impact of joining the campaign.
And then I have a question for Councilor Youssef. The Colorado Communities for Climate Action?
Yes.
Do they have a stand on this or any kind of position? I know we're involved mostly in Colorado, but this is nationwide, global, potentially global.
I have not heard of any stance that they're taking on this. I think kind of a different mission, but, so I'm not aware of any. But thank you. And I can reach out too and follow up as well.
I think the Colorado Communities for Climate Action, there's no Quantified Emissions Goal, but having joined that organization is another way that the city is contributing to these more ambitious climate goals by advocating at the state and federal level for policy that supports emissions reduction. So things that are beyond our immediate jurisdictional control but will impact the emissions in Durango.
I just want to say, first of all, thank you to you, Imogen, for all of your work in our sustainability program and for bringing this forward. Like, I'm assuming it's from you, because it does seem to be furthering our goals towards what we're trying to accomplish. But I'm fine getting more information if staff would like more information, you know, if council would like more information on staff time, it sounds like mostly staff time. But I think it's, it's, you know, all of these goals are just trying to solidify exactly where we stand in our efforts at moving forward, so I appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Do we need a vote to table it for now, or can we just take a...
I think a motion. I mean, I suppose if we don't take any action at all, but to bring it back, I think you need a motion to table it and bring it back at a particular time.
Okay, so do we have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? May we have a vote, please?
Mayor Protem Nosworthy?
Yes.
Councilor Youssef?
Yes.
Councilor Bosmans?
Yes.
Councilor Buell?
Yes.
And Mayor Baxter?
Yes. And on to 7.6, discussion and possible action concerning a letter of support for the Division of Housing's Operation Turnkey Funding for the Best Western Durango Inn and Suites. And Councilor Bosman, that motion a removal?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to get some more information on this topic. So first, it was a potential grant of 9.6 million, and now we're speaking over turnkey grant funding to a specific company. So my first question, I'm just run all the questions and if we skip one, I'll just come back to you. Is it free money or a loan for them? Because it's always not a funding through us, if I'm correct. Would that money, if it goes to them, do we lose access to it? Or is it an unlimited amount of money from the state? And then the amount is 7 million. The acquisition is, a loan, is seven or over 7 million? So where do the additional millions for the renovation come from? And I'm sure you probably might not know all the answers, but, and maybe the first thing is, tell me a little bit more about this developer, because this is the first time I've heard about the progress you guys have made with this opportunity. And maybe who has been, does anybody on the council know of this company?
Yes.
Yeah?
I have documentation on them, their brochures and everything.
Say again?
I have documentation on them, their brochures and everything. I've done some research on these kind of companies.
Okay, but not on this specific project?
Not on the Best Western, but on these kind of companies that do this kind of work.
So, good evening, Mayor Baxter, members of the council, Nicole Killian, Assistant Director for Community Development. And this is just a request for a letter of support for council for this new development partner that we have chosen, TWG, based out of Indianapolis. They are, they do have projects that are going on in Colorado right now. They do conversion projects for hotels or other structures into affordable housing, workforce housing, transitional housing, permit supportive housing. So they have a lot of capabilities when it comes to different housing types. And so we've chosen them to be the development partner for Best Western. And so they are helping us through the due diligence process with the anticipation of them taking over the contract for that property moving forward. We do plan to come back towards the end, mid, probably beginning to mid of November, to give you a bigger update, because we're still in the process of due diligence, so we don't have a lot of information back on our studies yet, Phase One Environmental. We're doing a survey, we're doing appraisal, and so we don't have that data back yet. So once we have that, we do plan to come back to city council with the more, larger presentation on the status of what's going on with the project. But the development partner is applying for this DOLA grant. This DOLA grant is available to public or private, and so this is just a letter of support. We have not heard back on the federal grant yet, and as you all are probably aware, the federal government has some issues they're dealing with, and so we're not sure when we will hear back from the federal government. And so we're just keeping our options open and making sure we're looking at, as we have told you from the beginning, looking at other potential funding options for this property. And so that's what this is. The city has no fiscal impact related to this letter of support. It is a loan, and there's gap funding available for the developer to be able to cover that loan, but it would be a loan that they would be, they're applying for. So the city is not a partner in the application, we are just providing a letter of support because it is a loan, and we are not interested in pursuing a loan for this project.
And did you have any discussion what the actual conversion would be of the hotel? Is it affordable housing or?
So they're, they're just getting involved. We're doing a market analysis of what are the highest needs for the community are, as well as what the potential for this property is. The development partner will be coming down in the next couple of weeks to take a look at the site with us and walk through, that'll be their first opportunity to look at the property. They have in-house their own architects, their own engineers, so they're a large company that does this. They have their own financial analysis group, and so they'll be doing a lot of that due diligence as well to make, help us make some determinations. That's what we're hoping when we come back in November, we'll have some more of those answers at that time.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to learn a little bit more about it. If it's just a letter of support for a company that you guys think is a good partner, potential partner, then I can support that letter. So if I can make the motion or let you have questions?
Were there any other comments or questions about that? No, okay, go ahead.
So let's move this forward, I motion to move it forward.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
I just want to thank Nicole and team for their work and ability to bring somebody on board so quickly. I also want to recognize, I believe you're working with Project Moxie on that, and so just a huge thank you for the effort of coming this far in such a short time.
And I would second that. May we have a vote, please?
Councilor Buell?
Yes.
Councilor Bosmans?
Yes.
Councilor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nosworthy?
Yes.
And Mayor Baxter?
Yes. So.
Just a small comment for staff. There are several attachments to some of the consent agenda items that were not included. The maps on 7.8 and 7.10, I don't think it makes a big difference, but.
It's only a request for a public hearing?
Well, the item on the consent agenda, the document says attachment at seven, and there's no attachment. So it's more of a cleanup requirement, but.
Okay. So on to public hearings, which we have none of apparently, and no city attorney comments? Mr. Nelson?
No.
Okay, introduction of ordinances. So 12.1 is an ordinance authorizing a lease with Agile Space Industries, Inc. at the airport and declaring an effective date.
Yes, this is ordinance O 2021-19. It follows a public hearing council held at the last meeting. So this would be first reading of this ordinance to authorize the execution of that lease. That's all I have.
Okay, sorry. And so we need to take a vote on this, yes?
Yes.
All right. Are there any questions for the city attorney?
The ordinance O 2021-19.
Do I hear any motion on 2021-19?
I'll move to approve ordinance number O 2021-19.
I second. Any further discussion? Fay, may we have a vote, please?
Councilor Bosmans?
Yes.
Councilor Buell?
Yes.
Councilor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nosworthy?
Yes.
And Mayor Baxter?
Yes. Item 12.2, an ordinance granting utility easements to fast-track communications to install fiber optic equipment on city-owned property at 2401 Rim Drive and declaring an effective date.
Yes, this is O 2021-20. Again, first reading of an ordinance to grant the stated utility easement to fast-track communication.
Any questions? May I have a motion, please?
I move to motion ordinance number 02021 to move forward.
Dash 20?
Dash 20.
Oh, sorry, dash 20.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Yes.
Any more discussion? May we have a vote, please?
Councilor Youssef?
Yes.
Councilor Bosmans?
Yes.
Councilor Buell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nosworthy?
Yes.
And Mayor Baxter?
Yes. Item 12.3, an ordinance for the purposes of amending the zoning of real property located within the city of Durango, Colorado, pursuant to Chapter 27, Section 6-3-2-3 and 2-1-2-6 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Durango, and declaring an effective date.
Yes, this is ordinance O 2021-21. Again, first reading of an ordinance to amend the zoning on the property owned by grounds per the prior approval by council.
Any questions for council? Okay, may we have a motion, please?
I'll move to approve ordinance number O-2021-21. Second.
Any further discussion? May we have a vote, please?
Mayor Protem Nosworthy?
Yes.
Councilor Buell?
Yes.
Councilor Bosmans?
Yes.
Councilor Youssef?
Yes.
And Mayor Baxter?
Yes. Item 12.4, an ordinance amending Chapter 27 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Durango Land Use and Development Code by the amendment of Chapters 2 and 3 and 4 and 7 related to established neighborhood multifamily zones designating a new residential use called multi-unit property and declaring an effective date.
Yes, this is ordinance O 2021-22. In a first reading of an ordinance making amendments to the land use code as specified here, is previously reviewed and approved by council.
Do we have any questions? Okay. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve ordinance number O 2021-22.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? May we have a vote, please, Fay?
Councilor Buell?
Yes.
Councilor Youssef?
Yep, yes.
Councilor Bosmans?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nosworthy?
Yes.
And Mayor Baxter?
Yes. I feel like I've said the same thing so many times. So now we're on to number 13, Administrative Jose Madrigil, city manager. Do we have a city update?
Yes, mayor and council, I do have a few items to pass on for those in attendance and those that are watching. Just want to remind the public that the Friends of the Library are conducting a bookmark contest. Elementary, middle, and high school students are invited to submit entries by October 6th. Entries must include original artwork and a book-related quote. Two winners in each category will receive a gift certificate to Maria's bookshop and will have 2,500 copies of their bookmark printed. Fall cleanup is also ongoing and will keep going through February, February through Friday of October 29th. City crews will be moving through neighborhoods, picking up tree trimmings and branches less than eight feet in length and eight inches in diameter, and bagged, boxed loose brush and leaves. Residents who pay for city trash services may participate. Please see the neighborhood pickup schedule at durangogov.org/cleanup. A big congratulations to our transportation department for being awarded the 2021 Outstanding Innovation Award by the Colorado Association of Transit Agencies. The award recognized Durango Transit for launching the Mercy Three Springs Route in February 2021 to improve community access to COVID-19 testing and vaccines. So a big congratulations to the transportation team. And finally, just want to let the community know that we are hiring and looking for individuals who like challenges and serving our community. If you or someone is looking for a career with the city of Durango, please check out our website at durangogov.org/jobs. We have some new jobs that include a parking enforcement officer, water distribution collection manager, and a planner one that we are looking to fill. That is my update today.
I just want to say, the bookmark competition is one of my favorite things of the entire year. I love it, so I'm really looking forward to that. Thank you. Council reports and actions. So if you have any actions that you want to talk about, or if you want to talk about your liaison reports, that would be great. Does anybody have any?
I can start. I have two. So the Creative Economy Commission met September 28th, and we're doing our retreat next week, so that's exciting. The Art Brigade website is updated now with photos and links to all the different artwork that's around Durango, and so you can go see that at durangocreativedistrict.org/b brigade. So Common Threads, the artwork project that we've had tried to bid and no one will bid on it, we can't get it installed. We had some talk about potentially doing that in the new current construction area, and so we're going to kind of talk with the CDOT and see if that could be a potential. And it's actually more highly trafficked area, but maybe it'd have to be spread out because it's, there's not like one big, does that make sense? But it could go in, potentially, so, I don't know, we'll see. I'm not promising anything, Nicole will probably kill me for bringing that up again. Let's see what else. Their murals that were awarded for, with the Durango Create Grant are going up. You can see one behind the penthouse and the Botanic Gardens, I believe. We approved the Storywalk budgeted CEC stuff, and I think that was it, kind of in that meeting. Oh, we talked about the lodgers tax a little bit, but not anything big. We just submitted our general recommendation, and then we'll kind of get back on track with that. And then I also had the Salt Fab meeting yesterday. I talked a little bit about that during our study session, but we looked at the 10-year forecast for the Water Fund and the Sewer Fund that was presented to Salt Fab. There's a lot of good discussion about like, you know, how much we're spending on maintenance versus new projects and increasing our water versus like, oh my gosh, 911 fixes. We also were presented and discussed the KPIs and how it was tied to the strategic plan, and it's all through Open Gov now, which is awesome. But there's a lot of things that aren't quite right with the KPIs. Like, there's some things that are getting flagged as like needs focus, but they're actually like above, and they're flagging it because we're beating our, you know, our measurement. Anyway, so there's like a few things we needed to kind of make a little bit better, and they had, everyone had some great suggestions, and I think that was really it. So, there you go.
Anyone else?
I'll jump in with the Community Relations Commission and two others. The Community Relations Commission met and had a discussion just about what are the achievements that have taken place in the past year? And I just want to highlight a couple of these. The translation that's taking place at city council, huge thanks to the staff for making that happen, and also at some of the community feedback meetings, they were having translation services. And I will highlight that just today I got a note in the mail that the activities guide, I think put out by Parks and Rec, is also in Spanish and available. So a huge thanks to staff for making that happen. Also, the transit services now includes Spanish translation in both their guides, and I believe also at the transit stops. The CRC redrafted their resolution. It's still being worked on to address some of your questions, mayor, and I hopeful that we'll have that back soon. They also started several subcommittees, both with indigenous groups, the Latinx and disabled. And these groups are really providing a way for people to be heard that might not have been engaged otherwise. And we saw this both in discussing ADA issues with Parks and Rec and multimodal, engaging the community around reinstating the 160 route and getting that to happen, and the renaming of assets. And also the CRC was quite complimentary of the Parks and Rec staff and working on that, both with the ADA and with the renaming of the assets, so I wanted to put that out. And then finally, the movies in the park. There was a children's film in Spanish with English subtitles, and that was well attended. So those are some of the accomplishments, and I believe they'll be looking at their next retreat planning session probably in January. I also wanted to touch base on the Wildfire and Watershed Protection Fund that Melissa and I are the working group, and Melissa, join in, please, if I miss something. The intergovernment agreement between the Fire District, the County, and the city is still being worked on. I'm looking to DIRK, I know they're fine tuning some of those issues, and we're still hoping to have that in mid-October to come to council, I believe. The CDHPE, the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, there's a $311,000 grant, and that will be administered by the Fire District. It is non-transferable, so they are committing to doing the whole project. Chief Doherty and his team have been out to look at Durango Hills and the Baby Bear area, those are within the Florita Drainage, and they're starting to have, work on some plans. The contract has not been signed yet, but we are on time, and there's a possibility that we might even get beyond the $311,000, an additional 150,000 to 200,000 for some work there. So we're pleased with that. There's some grant opportunities coming up, and we will need to be looking at applying for some of those grants and how to make that happen. And then Mountain Studies Institute is helping us organize a meta-meeting with all the players. I won't be able to name all of them, the city, the county, the Wildlife Advisory Board, Adaptive Partnership, RMI, MSI, tons of BLM, the Forest Service, to really come around that table and start to do that who, what, where, so that we have a full picture of the actions. And I do also want to recognize, I know she left, but I wanted to add, Councilor Youssef's thanking Imogen for her work with this group. She really kept us together when we needed strong staff support. And then earlier I did mention the IAB, they have a letter of support that they sent with regard to the adopting the SEH, the Water System Master Plan. I believe that's on the calendar for October 19th. As I mentioned earlier, we talked about some of the projects and particularly the 20 million, if that goes forward, having that be a bonded or some kind of financed program. A lot of discussion around the water sewer rates and reducing that water reserve fund. And again, as I mentioned earlier, they'll be meeting the first Monday in November to really, I think, come back to council with some recommendations on the rates and possibly things to do with that reserve fund to bring that more into alignment with our policy recommendations. Thank you, that's it.
Okay, anybody else?
I do have it. I'll give a short update on the Parks and Rec. I'll give a short update on the Parks and Rec Advisory Board's study session on September 28th. It was all about the budget and the capital improvement projects. I think the key, it wasn't concluded. So there's too many projects that had changes in the amounts, for example. Some of the numbers that were for specific projects doubled in size. So there were questions about why they went up so much. And there were some numbers that were either typos or changed between the two sessions. So they are getting more information, consistent and clear information from staff. And then they'll go through the next capital improvement project session.
Yes. All right, I just was going to do an update on our Colorado Municipal League. Several of us as councilors had the opportunity to attend. It was a really good conference, and there were some very good breakout sessions. And as the CML Board Liaison, I wanted to, or as the member for that board, I wanted to kind of talk about our board meeting. We had a lot of, we had a lot of opportunities to, we gathered a lot at this meeting since we were all there in person. And we did have a formal board meeting, and I wanted to talk about it because it was around housing. And that's the president's initiative for CML this year is housing. It was noted, I'm just going to give a couple, because I thought it was pretty interesting, so I want to give an update on that meeting. They talked about the fact that definitely housing for many, if not most every community within, on the board, it's their number one concern. Not just affordable housing, but also advocacy and education to help communities specialize in housing. They talked about affordable housing, homelessness, workforce housing, entry-level housing, and senior housing, and the need to really think outside of the box. They think it's a very exciting time for housing generally, seeing some of the funding and willingness from the legislator. Some municipalities noted that they are already, you know, they're ready to go. They have identified their priorities, and they're actively seeking funding for specific projects, much like we are doing as well. And many are taking a region-wide approach, so they're showing a lot of coordination of resources and efforts. Homelessness and the supply of housing, support services that go along with homelessness was talked about. The goal for CML and their focus on this initiative is to get direct funding to the municipalities and let those municipalities work directly with their own developers. And they did talk about the fact that land is the biggest issue, and if municipalities can provide the land, it's so much more effective and may also increase opportunities for funding. They talked a lot about the reality of NIMBY politics that have a tendency to sometimes get in the way of local municipalities in making changes that may encourage more diverse housing types. And they noted, we've talked a lot about how we, as elected officials, get caught in the middle. There was discussion around, I thought this was, this was a really interesting discussion, around the need for sustainable funding around housing and the need to be able to generate some of that locally. And in this regard, we discussed the possibility of what it would take to change Tabor and allow for a real estate transfer tax. There was a discussion, really quite a long discussion around the feasibility and possibility of calling this transfer tax a fee. And instead, of course, as a workaround. And there was also recognition that there could be court challenges that come along with that, which has thus made it a very tough option. There was discussion from several municipalities that they have conducted local surveys around housing, in some cases statistically valid surveys, to find out exactly where they are lacking in housing and what specifically their needs are and their highest demands are. There was a lot of discussion around the fact that this is helpful for applying for funding at the state and national level. And so two ideas really were talked about quite a bit, was the changing of this constitution and what it would take in allowing the transfer taxes. And also, they talked about the changing the VRBOs to taxing at the commercial rate instead of the residential rate. And they talked about the fact that there might be some support for that now that it's a tax that residents don't pay, and real estate is such a hot market right now. So lots of discussion around that. And then discussion around incentive programs for long-term rentals. And communities talked about ideas around potential first and last month grants, grants for rehabilitation to property owners who are willing to keep their units long-term, and then discouraging short-term rentals with fees and expenses. So it was really interesting discussion, and I just kind of wanted to share that. But also, really good conference, it was nice. And also, our city manager was there, and we had staff there and staff that presented. And so, yeah, it was really good, nice to be able to attend. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. Any others?
And a question maybe for a future meeting. Was there anybody else on updates on the board?
I could, I could add a comment to Councilor Nosworthy's point about the Wildfire and Watershed Protection Fund and the status of that agreement. We were working on that agreement for quite some time. I'm sorry to butt in, I didn't mean to do that. But the agreement is, in essence, completed, it has been completed, except for provisions around funding by the parties. And I think that, my understanding is that the county commissioners have set a work session to discuss the agreement within the next week, I think. So the outcome of that may depend, or the ability to get an agreement together before the next council meeting will sort of depend, I think, on the outcome of that. So I do, I've engaged in discussions with the city manager and with the finance director about funding opportunities so that we can complete that portion of the agreement. So I think we're getting close, but there's still some details to be worked out.
Councilor Bosmans?
And can I just add one more thing to that same note, sorry? Everyone's all around you.
And I can't see.
I know. On the WWPF as well, on the funding, as Mr. Nelson noted, there is some questions from the county and the group around 2022. I spoke with the city manager about it today, about 2022 funding. And so there's, Jose spoke with me about it today. And, you know, just to reiterate with all of council, we did appropriate money this past May or June. We couldn't remember exactly what month it was. And that money's, those have not yet been spent. And so they will likely be carried forward such that we can continue our action in 2022. But we haven't specified exactly, and staff hasn't specified how, recommended yet, how that, those monies will be spent. But we are, we agreed that it is, it will behoove us to wait for the IGA first before we go forward with making those 2022 appropriations.
Correct. Councilor Bosmans?
Yeah, I just wanted to check and follow up on the email from Scott Shine about two properties that an interested party was interested in for developing. I'm not sure if you remember the email, that would be low-cost housing. And maybe we should put that on the agenda or ask staff to include it in one of the next meetings. Are we familiar with those properties? I'm not sure.
Are you talking about La Posta?
No. Two specific properties, and they included drawings.
Yeah, the one across from the library, yes. Yeah. Will that be part of the discussion of our URA meeting on Monday?
Good evening, Councilors Kevin Hall, Managing Director, Community Development. It can be a brief conversation on the URA, because really, I think there's not certainty that it's a URA project, but it certainly, those could both rise to that occasion. I thought that was a fairly unique approach to informing the city of their interest, because typically, that would be inquiry to community development about the availability of those properties, and then a conversation about what was being proposed. Scott's already followed up with those individuals to get a sit-down with them. So he could certainly give a brief update to the URA board because it could have relevance to the board.
Or if it's, that's not applicable, it could be back to us again.
We can also provide a write-up, that's an email update to everybody.
That would be great, yeah. Let's do it that way, an email update would be wonderful.
Out of curiosity, can I ask, if a developer comes to you for a property, do you say, do you work straight away with that developer? Or do you put that property on the market for competitive bids? And then say, okay, we have a developer, so we're going to move forward with this property?
In all cases, if it's city-owned property, we would have to go through a process of disposal that would meet our purchasing requirements or our disposition requirements. And that would typically be put something out for all takers to put a bid on.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure, because that would be part of this move in any direction. Thank you, Kevin.
All right, anything else? Meeting adjourned, thank you.